Here.
Counselor Storger.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Ott.
Here.
Counselor Hooper.
Here.
Counselor Powell.
There.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Mayor Wal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so our next item on our agenda is swearing in a police officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna let you pronounce a name.
I will. Thank you. Counsel, it's my distinct pleasure to inform you that today we hired our last police officer I've hoped for a while. He's seated here with us today. His name is Thiago Jamelo. And I'd like to have Thiago come up and introduce himself to you, and then we will swear him in as a police officer. Come on up, Thiago.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thiago Jamelo. Very pleased to be here and take on this new job and role for the town. I am somewhat new to Mount Angel. I started coming here last year. I visit the abbey up the hill very frequently. And I just love it here. I look forward to being of service to each one of you and all of this community. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Just tell me where you're from originally and maybe what you've done just before.
Okay, yeah. Well, I was born and raised in Brazil, and I moved to the West upon finishing college a good twenty years ago. I lived in different places in the West before I settled in Oregon. And I did actually many jobs before this one. I just worked my way into a better life than what I had in Brazil, and that's my story. Police work is fairly new to me. It's also something that I started to get into last year when I met a friend that is lieutenant in the police. And he encouraged me to start training and studying for the police because I had a lot of the qualities that they look for. And once, of course, I met Chief Mark Daniel, I started to learn a lot from him as well, and I still have a lot to learn. But I know that I'm in good hands. The team here in Mount Angel is amazing, really good people, and so I'm looking forward to working here.
Okay, we'll make this official. Stand right here. Raise me. Raise your right hand. I, Thiago Jamelo.
I, Thiago Jamelo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Oregon.
Of the State of Oregon.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Therefore.
Therefore.
And rules and regulations.
And rules and regulations.
Of the Mount Angel Police Department.
Of the Mount Angel Police Department.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of a police officer.
A police officer.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
For their instructions. Okay, so thank you very much. Yep. I'll have your sign this tomorrow. You can hang or you can.
Okay, I do have a very long commute. I will. I will stay. Next time I'll stay longer. Thank you, Chief. Thanks. Thank you, everyone. See you. Good night.
I just want to point out that I would have pronounced his name correctly, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation by Public Service. An update on recycling legislation. So we have two esteemed guests from Public Service to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. My name is Cindy Rogers, and I am the Municipal Relationship Manager for Public Services. And I'm joined here this evening by Travis Comper. He's our Municipal Contract Administrator. And we are also joined by our General Manager, Matt Ketchum. He's sitting here over there. Thank you so much for having us this evening. Our presentation this evening is a review of the essential services that we provide for the city of Mount Angel in 2023. We'll be back later this year to present on the Recycling Modernization Act, ask council for a rate adjustment if needed, and then review 2024. In Oregon, most cities have chosen to use the franchise system for solid waste collection. Here are just a few of the benefits of the franchise system. Oregon revised statute 459 grants service and reporting authority to the cities. There's an increase in operational efficiencies, decrease in streetwear and terror, and a decrease in air and noise pollution. Cities also have an additional source of revenue through the franchise fee, and Mount Angel's is 3% gross receipts. Excellent, please. We have six drivers servicing the city of Mount Angel. Drivers have the curbs of over eight hundred homes eight times a month. We service trash once a week, yard debris, communal recycle every other week, and glass, which includes batteries, motor oil, and cooking oil. And that's also every other week. Eighty thousand five hundred and forty-four residential cars were picked up in 2023. Here are just a few of the events that we partner with the city on. Not insurance from National Night Out, and of course, we do Oktoberfest and Boltfest and City Benefit Festival, and we do these events every year. Although I will say National Night Out was the first year. It was last year. Excellent, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, we service over eight hundred single-family homes in 2023, twenty multi-family customers, sixty-six commercial customers, and we did two hundred and ten hauls, which includes both drop boxes and. Can we break it down on the residential service by the size of cart? And you can see that the thirty-five gallon and the sixty-five gallon are the most popular, and that makes up sixty-four percent. And then not far behind is the ninety-five gallon at twenty-eight percent. Excellent. This slide shows how many tons we picked up of residential material. We picked up over nine hundred tons of garbage, nearly two hundred tons of recycle, and over seven hundred tons of yard debris. Excellent. Here's a breakdown of commercial material. We haul over five hundred tons of garbage and a hundred tons of recycle. This slide shows a breakdown of material haul in drop boxes and compacters. And we hold fifteen tons of concrete, four hundred and sixteen tons of garbage, five tons of recycle, and forty-one tons of yard debris. And then I'll pass it over to.
Good evening, Mayor Wal, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Travis Comper, your Municipal Contract Administrator. And I'll go over a little bit about current recycling and then what we have coming up in terms of legislation. Currently, we will recycling resources on paper, cardboard, plastic bottles and jugs, and tin and aluminum. These things will be expanded upon with the Oregon Recycling Modernization Act, and we will be back this fall to update the council on that. The new law was passed in 2021, and DEQ is currently working through the rule-making process for that new system. And it will take effect July first of 2024. Back to current recycling, I will deal. In terms of properly recycling, we just need to make sure that the materials are empty, clean, and dry. In, next, yeah, that's perfect. In terms of residential curbside glass collection in Marion County, there's kind of the gold standard in Oregon. Residents can recycle many hard recycle items, including household batteries. This is up to a cord Ziploc bag every other week. Latex paint, which is up to two gallons, just no rusty cans. And then motor oil, antifreeze, and cooking oil just need to go back in their original containers or clear sealable container and clearly label. And that's every other week, guys. Excellent. This last year, we added e-waste to the Mount Angel cleanup day, and we look forward to expanding and making this event bigger and better each year. And I'll pass back to Cindy to go over our financials. Thanks.
So I'll briefly touch on the statement of income. Keep in mind that we'll be back to cover the statement of income and the annual expenses when we return to request a rate adjustment. So I won't go into too much detail here, but I did want to just point out that there was an increase in revenue in 2022 due to the Wilco fire cleanup. So that was kind of an outlier, but I did want to just point that out. Excellent. Thank you. Here are the annual expenses. I just want to draw your attention to disposal and recycle. Disposal and recycle is by far our greatest expense, and these expenses are out of our control and are driven by the market. Unfortunately, since twenty eighteen, we've seen a significant increase in the cost of processed recycle. And since 2020, we've seen the cost of labor has also increased due to the labor shortages. So, and then lastly, I just want to say that the city did receive over nineteen thousand dollars in finance fees in 2023. Excellent. We're just gonna follow that, thank you.
Turn off, jump out.
This slide, this is a pie chart that demonstrates that disposal and recycle make up thirty-six percent of the monthly bill for our residential thirty-five gallon roll cart. The second largest component is labor, which is twenty-one point three percent. And I'll pass it back to.
Cindy. Covanta Marion County Inc., or often called Covanta or simply the burner, is important because material is low control by Marion County, and they've designated the burner to be the primary location for solid waste to go. The current or ending agreement with Covanta was to end this month, but they reached a tentative agreement with the county to go through the end of the year. And we'll be back to update council with any public declaration or continuance of that agreement. The state county commander is still in talks to see about what the future of the facility is going to look like. And we should be back this fall and do an update before we get to here. And I'll pass back to Cindy Robinson.
Thank you, Travis. So as I mentioned at the start of the presentation, we plan to be back either later this year or early next year to do a presentation on the Recycling Modernization Act, a review of 2024, and then request a rate adjustment if necessary. Lastly, I just want to let council know that Public Services has a charitable foundation, and we give millions of dollars each year to nonprofits. So I really want to encourage any nonprofits in Mount Angel to reach out to me, and I'll happily help them through the process. So that's all I have for you this evening, or we have for you this evening. So thank you so much for your time. Thanks for having us.
And do you have questions?
Yeah, questions, wire play.
Which are your questions?
I wanted to know what kind of projects qualify for the guidance.
Reach out to me. I'll give you my card.
Yes.
Yep. Good question.
They had a list, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So are you in, do you have an office in Woodburn?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's where my office is, yeah.
So if we call, we'd be calling someone in Woodburn.
Yeah, we do.
Mountain Texas.
Yeah, but you could actually go in there. Not in Texas, no. Yeah, we do have a customer. So after COVID hit, now our customer service works remotely, but we have, I think, we have like a couple live in Silverton, and they're they're spread out around the area. But yeah, but you can also like go into our Woodburn office and pay a dollar or ask questions. Just not to speak because our flooring is being pulled up, and so it's a little chaotic right now, but yeah.
Yeah, we have just over a dozen Oregon reps that work from home for customer service, but if you're on the wall waiting more than like, I think, forty-six seconds or something, it'll kick you in the ass and run you through. Just constantly on hold for the next second. But yeah. And we're often looking to fill those positions, too, so there, you know, people that are local.
No city employees can fly.
If you take people out, you can sound some scary there.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Today. Moving right along. I would like our student counselor, Sailor, to come up front. Sailor is our student counselor, as everyone knows, as everyone knows. She's attended most of our meetings, and she's put up with us, month in and month out. So as a token of our appreciation for your service, we're giving her a scholarship.
Thank you so much.
You can't leave early. Okay, the next item, appearance of interest at citizens. Do you have any, Colby?
I do.
Okay.
Is it Char? Char Schmidt?
I'm here for just a few minutes to talk to you about the proposal by Oktoberfest to put a new beer garden over here on Cleveland Street between College and Palmer. And I think I want to start out by saying I don't want any of you to think that I'm down on Oktoberfest because of this. I love Oktoberfest and look forward to it every year. We've been involved in it, as many of you know, since the very beginning of it. It does a lot of good for this town, and I'm proud of that, and I want to keep it that way. I want it to be something that we all enjoy, like, and appreciate. I don't want a beer garden in a residential district. And this over here has got four, three houses that their their driveways feed right onto Cleveland Street. All of those people were, they have kids that go to work, they go to school, they play sports. And we don't, we don't need one over there. We have plenty of room down in the south end of town for alcoholic beverages. We've got the three big old best venues. We also got four, at least four or five businesses in town where they can purchase alcohol anytime they want to, as long as they're open. I don't believe we need another beer garden, especially on this end of town. So with that, I just am asking you to think about it. I've talked to Gary Grassman. He's the Vice President in charge of the talent for Oktoberfest. And he tells me that it probably isn't going to go through. But I know, too, that there is just one person, that there's a board of fifteen or so on the Oktoberfest board. So if it comes up before you, I would like to consider the factors that feed into this and the people that it will involve, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Any comment on that, or?
We've not received any requests. We received some communication a number of months ago about that. And it was my suggestion to the board that was inquiring at the time that they should go out and talk to the neighbors about it because it's the neighbors in the neighborhood that they're going to be most affecting. So I would, I encouraged them to do that, and I believe that's exactly what they did. And I have since talked with the president about a week or so ago, and he said, as far as he was concerned, it was a done deal, not happening. So I am not too concerned about seeing any possibility coming forward as relates to a beer garden occurring right down there. So if something does pop up, we will certainly discuss it and take appropriate action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
In this agreement in its current form, is there anything that allows or prohibits that? Would they need to amend that agreement in a way?
Well, we'd have to, we'd probably have to go around and do either a dead one or a different program.
Okay. So theoretically, it should come back before us if it were to move forward.
It depends on how it's approached.
Got it.
I would likely bring it back irregardless.
Thank you.
Do what?
So we have the final say? Not necessarily.
I would, not necessarily. It kind of depends on how it's presented. But like I said, I would like, likely bring anything like that to council.
Thank you.
Do what?
Okay. Any correspondence, Colby?
No.
Next item is review of accounts payable. And we receive a accounts payable report in our bucket and all around the world. Council questions, starting with Council President Eater.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Counselor Ott.
I do. On page four. The yellow curb paint is really brown. Two thousand four hundred and twenty-five. How much curb does that paint? And when is the curb painting going to start happening? It's my favorite topic.
We usually stop at the little hole. For this.
But you have like a paint timer. Where are your?
Yes, usually late spring or this.
Okay. Soonish.
Before our harvest. Yes, yes, we always try to get done.
A little further around some curves, though.
We're correcting a lot of curves and corners that I think.
There's a couple of corners that really need to be stretched out.
Yeah. Do it. We found Astro this year.
Okay. My people come help you paint. Paint my own curves.
Alan, does that include the melting ones or the?
No, we got plenty of thermal.
We got plenty of thermal?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering if that was included in that.
No, that's all.
But the crossing, but the strip. That was my own question. Yeah, that was my only question.
And next, Celtic fan, Counsel Donahue.
Go Blazers. Now I don't have to do that.
Counselor Storger.
I have enough.
Let's get Counsel Hill. Counselor Powell.
I have two questions. One of them is just, are we doing the master plan simultaneously? Because I think we approved to do all. We did four of them. We kind of, or are we doing them start, finish each one?
We're doing one at a time.
We are doing one at a time? Okay. And I'm just curious on timing that, taking all of them and making a strategic plan out of them. And then the other one was, I had a question. I'm gonna bring it up here was Postmas repaired sprinkler system. That looks like a darn near full replacement. I'm assuming there was quite a lot of stuff that got done there.
Yeah, we've had issues with that ever since I can remember. So he went in and he didn't necessarily replace everything, but he found some leaks. And we're not sure what happened, but the control system inside the carriage house was completely replaced. The one that the city bought was removed. So we found that and put the, the, I think it's a rainbird, rainbird back on. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of new pipelines put in, some fixes and drip lines.
Okay, and then, and this doesn't have to be answered right now, but I questioned if we couldn't potentially track that under the code for the salt filled house because we have that other account where we put our three percent every year. It's just more, I just want to make sure. It'd be nice to keep track on what we're spending on the assets as opposed to putting it into big services account. So it's up to you and Tara, but I just, it caught my eye, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Counsel. We have no questions. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, approve approval of the May sixth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? Here, none. I'll undertake a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Again.
Motion by Counsel Powell, second by Counsel Ott. To approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Counselor Hill.
Aye.
Counselor Powell.
Aye.
Counselor Eater.
Aye.
Counselor Hooper.
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Donahue.
Aye.
Counselor Ott.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the business. Item nine A is recreational immunity opt-in. That's an action resolution number fifteen eighty-seven. I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer, and I will defer to our finance director. Sheriff.
Yeah, this is something I was contacted by our insurance agent of record, saying that the city of Bend and several other cities have opted in to this provision. It's not a new provision, but it got a lot of press when recreational immunity kind of broke for a brief period of time. And so this provision is automatic to larger cities like Portland, and anybody smaller can opt in to provide recreational immunity for, what is it, paths and certain unimproved rights ways. So just to cover our basis, they recommended that we go ahead and opt in on this.
Okay. The questions are concerned by council?
Yes. So as a citizen, what are we, are we covered if the city is found liable for or negligent certain cases? Because as a council, we're all supposed to represent the citizens, and I'm looking out for them as well. So if they get hurt on a trail or in our parks, are we going to do everything we can possibly legally in another power to make them rightfully? Well, we're covered under recreational immunity so that the city is in way to be held. Right, but what I'm saying is, is if we are, because what if we're not maintaining our trails or our playground equipment or what have you? And then we are found to be at fault because this, there has been an incident that has happened that someone has gotten hurt. I don't know if it was on city property or somewhere else. But are we going to make them whole? Well, that would be up to our risk portion that Tara is in charge of, so engaging with our insurance company and ensuring, engaging with our city attorney's office, and we would go through the normal process of determining liability there. Because it says it limits private claims or rights of action based on negligence for personal injury or property.
Cause it says it limits private claims or rights of action based on negligence for personal injury or property. So basically just says we are not at fault for anything.
That's what, that's what this um. Recreational immunity is and has been for a number of years. Otherwise, otherwise, our insurance company would direct us to close all of our parks and everything else.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've kind of followed this, you know, the legislature, so with the league. Uh, it doesn't. Stop someone from making a claim. It, it, it just provides the city and its taxpayers, or our citizens, from. Uh. Taking on liability. That. May or may not be our fault, and that's. Uh, so. I think our CIS does a pretty good job of handling claims and settling them. So, you know, they, they're the ones that will make a fine settlement, but. But um. It doesn't stop someone from filing something, but it does offer protection to our taxpayers, so.
Alrighty.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on. Resolution number fifteen eighty seven.
I will move to approve the attached resolution fifteen eighty seven, opting to limit liability in the manner established by R S. One oh five point six six eight two.
Second.
The motion by. Counselor Eater, second by Counselor Hooper. You approve resolution number fifteen eighty seven, roll call please.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor Fow?
Aye.
Counselor Eater?
Aye.
Counselor Hooper?
Aye.
Counselor Astorga?
Aye.
Counselor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Wall?
Aye. The motion passes six one. Next item is a. Public hearing. Um, on supplemental budget number two. And so I'm going to open a public hearing on. Budget number two. And. Ask your staff report.
Yes, so this is to make sure that we can pay the contractors for the emergency um, sewer. Repairs, is this right? Stormy, yes, sorry, I was thinking storm, but yes, right there, we, we need to make sure we can actually. Fund the project that we passed last month, so this is making sure the funds are there.
Thank you. Uh. And what did that, what did the final amount come out to be? You done? Have it yet?
One seventy seven?
Four hundred. I don't think it was, I think it was less than that.
Okay.
I think it was not by much. Um.
I can look at my email real quick, give me a sec. The flow line?
Yeah, I just coded um. A good portion of it today, it's fifty four and change, and they still have to uh, do the rehabbing.
So it woke me under the. Two hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, here's the file. Cause they had to revise it.
Yeah.
Um. One sixty seven, eight ninety eight.
Also have any questions or comments on this resolution?
Yeah, uh, you might want to change on attachment A. On the second, whereas, where it says a supplemental budget makes it gender to the current year's budget increased in a sewer fund. Shouldn't it be storing, since it's a stormwater expense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you don't want to be pulling out from one or the other.
No, and I wasn't planning on it, cause the exhibit A says storm fund, but yes, thank you for that. Okay.
Thank you. And questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. Um, oh wait, excuse me, I'm not gonna do that. Going to ask, are there any public testimony on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the attached resolution fifteen eighty eight. Authorizing appropriations, amending the fiscal year of twenty twenty three, twenty four budget in the city of Mount Angel.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Stora, second by Counselor Fow. To approve resolution number fifteen eighty eight, roll call please.
Counselor Donahue?
Aye.
Counselor Ott? Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Fow?
Aye.
Counselor Eater?
Aye.
Counselor Hooper?
Aye.
Counselor Astorga?
Aye.
Mayor Wall?
Aye. Okay. Next item is a public hearing on. Electing to receive state shared revenues. For. School year two thousand twenty four, twenty five. And I'm gonna ask for a staff report, please.
Yes, we are legally bound to hold a public hearing on the use of state shared revenues um, for next school year. Otherwise, we are not allowed to partake in those, so they go, the state shared funds. State shared revenue goes to the general fund to support our day in and day out expenses.
Thank you. Counselor, any questions?
Okay. Two, two questions, maybe they're stupid, cause I don't want to take time to go back to the budget. The, the budget that was presented to us assumed we would pass this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they were already put into the budget.
Because my second question is, is I can't imagine there being a reason not to. Except the state.
Exactly, exactly, but maybe, but maybe.
Making sure there's nothing hiding in the weeds here.
But, but I think the public hearing is to allow citizens to say that they want the money to go to something.
Got it.
Different than what we're doing.
Okay. Okay, then I will ask for any public testimony on. The city's election to. Receive state shared revenues. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move to adopt, to approve the attached resolution to find the city's election to receive state shared revenue. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second by Counselor, motion by Counsel, Counselor Fow. Second by Counselor Hooper. To approve resolution. Number fifteen eighty nine. Roll call please.
Counselor Astorga?
Aye.
Counselor Donahue?
Aye.
Counselor Ott?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Fow?
Aye.
Counselor Eater?
Aye.
Counselor Hooper?
Aye.
Mayor Wall?
Aye. New. Next item is. Resolution number fifteen ninety, budget adoption for the. Twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. And I'll ask for a. Staff report, please.
First, I want to point out, under the recommendation, it should not say library department, so that was. That was a mistake on my part, and I'm also recommending the alternative motion. Because we have asked for a few alterations, so I would love it if you guys would agree with my requests. And approve it, the budget as amended. So what we did was, because of the storm emergency project, our beginning fund balance is gonna be a lot shorter. Um, beginning next year than we had originally anticipated when we put the budget together. And so we, by reducing the beginning fund balance, we also need to reserve the reserve for future. Um, amount. And. That was it, and so, yeah, I included um, the, the altered. Uh, budget pages that were handed out on the budget committee. So pages seventy one, and then that changes the total uh, budget amount on page seventy seven. All the changes are in red. And I think um. The resolution in the packet that was handed out did not reflect. The amendment, the, the changes I'm requesting the storm fund, so the resolution as amended is on the table in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions or staff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the attached resolution fifteen ninety, adopting the budget, making appropriation, composing and categorizing. Add power and taxes for the. Twenty twenty four, twenty five fiscal year in Sea of Mountain Angel, add amended.
Second.
Okay, moving my Counselor Fow.
Yeah.
Second by. Counselor Ott. Approve resolution number. Fifteen ninety has amended. Roll call please.
Counselor Hooper? Counselor Astorga?
Aye.
Counselor Donahue?
Aye.
Counselor Ott?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Fow?
Aye.
Counselor Eater?
Aye.
Mayor Wall?
Aye. Thank you. Next item is our. Fee schedule update, which is resolution number fifteen ninety one. And I will ask for a staff report on that.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the fiscal year, we have a rate increase. Um, for the ambulance license, and then the utility rates are increased per. The Seattle Bellevue Toma CPIU. And uh, those were both increased by the four point four percent from December of twenty twenty three. The um, the next thing I'm asking is to increase a few of the planning fees. Um, because I feel like it's hard for people to come in. It assume based on our deposit or our fee that that's gonna encompass everything, and then they get billed for double what they've done. So um, asking for more upfront so that they know that it's gonna cost them more. And then we will continue to bill if it goes over, and a lot of these, anything under the planning deposits is refundable if it's not used. So. Most of these are still the same, um, I included kind of a. A summary average for all the, the planning types from twenty twenty to current. Based on their costs, and so. And then we were charging a credit card service fee on planning and planning, planning fee and planning deposits and SEC. And we realized that the public works type A and type B are in the same. Amount of dollars and figured that they should also be charged the credit card service fee.
Thank you, um. Got any questions?
I, I got one. Um. So I've been told, and some of you probably are involved in Mays. About to use sports, and I was told that the reason they did not rent Harbor Park because it was too expensive. Is that correct?
I had heard similar rumors, so.
So I don't know what it was last year, what they had to pay compared to this, right, see they get a hundred dollars back and a three hundred dollar. Fee for deposit.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess I looked at it, that those little, little kids, they're our future leaders. And now they're having to play their T-ball over here by the tennis courts. So I don't know what the breaking point was, that they decided not to pay the money because they said it was too expensive. So I guess I'm trying to go to bat. For the little kids.
When I looked into it, as far back as I could find, going back to twenty twenty, the fee was always three hundred dollars. So that part didn't change.
So why, why do they feel it's too expensive now?
Because according to their treasurer, last year, they only spent the hundred dollars. Fee, the hundred dollar, you weren't charged in three hundred dollar fee, is what I was told.
Yeah, we had, we had a discussion at a previous council meeting, I'm not sure if you were at that one. Um, so. The JBO, uh, Silverton JBO. For the last couple of years has come in and paid the fees, no problem. Um, and looking back, Mays had not, and I was like, I can't treat one different over the other. Without any agreement or reasoning to not charge, right, like I have to, I can't be discriminatory. Right, so I was like, I, I need to charge you this, I don't know why I was char, not charged in the past. I don't know if it was a previous city manager agreement, handshake deal, I don't know, I don't have any records, so I, I told him I have to charge it. This year, and that's when they were like, okay, that's when I'm going to. But they could still use, they could still use the field without renting it. Nobody said they couldn't use it.
Just a matter of, it wouldn't be reserved for them, they showed up.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so it could be reserved for something else, and then you show up, you can't play there.
Mm-hmm.
I strongly encouraged Mays leadership to come to one of our meetings. If they were having this issue, thus far have not seen them here, unfortunately, but um, I know. Counselor Stora brought up the thought of. Making some sort of agreement, what went through my head is how many years we could rent that park for three hundred dollars before we ever. Paid for the attorney fees to make said adjustment. Um, or agreements, um, one of the thoughts that I had previously is. If we look at the use of the facilities, because I actually do potentially rent a park this week. Um, we have resident and non-resident. Um, and so perhaps there is a way that we can have a resident and non-resident. Uh, apply to sports leagues for approvers, right, so a mountain angel group. Pays a certain price, anyone coming from outside pays another price, and then church does it when you get married. Outfield press does it when they sell your wristband, like kind of a not uncommon thing, but I don't know who we're allowed to do it, so. That's private, exactly, no, I totally understand, that's why I said, I know that the thought process is there elsewhere, I don't know if we're allowed to do that. I just noticed that we do it for individuals, maybe we could amend, when I was spending a bunch of money, we could amend our fee schedule. But I don't, again, I don't have money from Mays here to. Talk about it with.
One of the things that we have in our city charter, and I was reading up on it, is city manager has the discretion. To whether he can waive fees or not, or lower them and reduce them. So if we can get chief and the Mays board and sit down and agree to a price that are both agreeable to the city and Mays. I think it'd be a great idea. And if it's. Not with what chief is acceptable with, or what staff is. I don't know, but. That could be a solution.
I'm open to talking about any of the. So I just. Well, I think that's probably the best route we could go is have chief sit down with, with Mays board and. Uh. Go from there, or have him come into a council meeting and we all lash it out.
So I, I'm gonna pipe in. Uh, my opinion on this matter is it has nothing to do with the fees, right, this is a personal thing. They don't have their books in line, they have the money, they can pay the thing and rent the field. I don't think we need to. Pay chief or, I mean, we're, but he wastes his time, if they want to have a talk about this, I think they can come in. Um, because it's not about one hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, if they want to use the field. Pay what silver doesn't pay, pay what they paid four years ago. Um, so I think it's kind of, I mean, we just need to move past that, so. It's just, it's so, so. Uh, it's not about the money, so.
I, I think if anything changes, it needs to change on the fee schedule, and I am not one to put. Our city manager in the position of negotiating with multiple. Local entities.
Mm-hmm.
And then putting his. And then putting his discretion into question. Whatever it is, it's going to be on paper and it's going to apply all the way across our town. That's my opinion.
I'm not familiar with fees being part of the city charter.
Um, I can't remember where I read it. I'll get back to you on that, but I know there's, there was a
Might be, it might be in a resolution. I don't think it would be.
I'd have to look it up again, but I, I remember reading it, so I'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know the charter requires officers of the city to enforce city regulations and rules, so anyway. Okay, so.
I mean, I, 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 I just thought maybe the fee got raised high enough and they said, we're not paying it. We're going to go out where, where, where it shouldn't be, should have been paying it. You said how many years ago?
I, I looked back to twenty twenty and then
Yeah, and it should have been, it was three hundred dollars then. Is that what you're saying? Okay. So it's, it's looked like it's Mays' problem, not our problem.
Yes.
I mean, two hundred doll, two hundred dollars net uh should not be a deal breaker.
No.
Yeah, there might be private donors that would be willing to donate two hundred dollars to avoid this. That's not what's
I was just thinking, we could probably take up a collection tonight.
I mean, you have the park, you want the kids to use it, and then when they don't use it, you're trying to parent, why didn't they use it?
Okay. Moving right along. Uh, we're still, we haven't voted on this yet, have we? We haven't even made a motion.
Sorry. Fees are okay. No, no questions while I propose.
There are other questions.
So uh I have a quick question. Just, I want to make sure I heard something that you said correctly. So planning fees are fixed rates. If we're assuming the liability, if, if we, we stay under, we keep the net difference, if we go over, we eat the net difference. Planning deposits are simply that. They are deposits and we recover our actual costs.
Correct.
Okay. I want to make sure I understood that correctly.
Correct. What would probably help me more is if we seen the old rates.
They're right next to it.
They're right behind it, next page.
That's what
Where you at?
Red. Well, it's these, it's these squares over here is what she took out of the table. She shifted over.
I, I did it specifically for you and then they
I have a short memory. How about all these?
They're on, keep, keep going. There you go.
They're over here.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Okay.
I, I tried to market. I tried to market current rates and yeah, sorry.
Next year, can you put like rate above it?
Race page request.
Race.
Race page.
No, you're doing my homework. But thank you.
Okay, so we still, I would like this is resolution number fifteen ninety one. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the attached resolution adopting a master fee schedule provided by the city of Memphis. Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Foul, second by Counselor Hopeless. And approval resolution fifteen ninety one. Roll call please.
Counselor Eater.
Aye.
Counselor Over.
Aye.
Counselor Astor.
Aye.
Counselor Donahue.
Aye.
Counselor Ott.
Aye.
Counselor Hill.
Aye.
Counselor Bow.
Aye.
Mayor Wall.
All right. Thank you.
Maybe I was thinking what I was gonna say.
Okay, our next item is uh item nine F. No parking zone on Monroe Street. An action item and um ask for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this kind of goes a little bit without saying and uh I've got backup uh several D B uh over there on Monroe Street right now with the fire district. Um, over time, the Mount Angel Fire District and the community in large, I'm just gonna read my staff report because it's, I think it gets to the point. Um, I've had to deal with parking issues caused by neigh- neighboring businesses on Monroe Street and North Main Streets, which continue to occur today. These parking issues have been hard to address in a timely manner. Recently, city staff found out through some council communication that the fire department, while responding to a nine one one call, had difficulty actually pulling out of their driveway to respond to the call for service due to vehicles being parked across from their driveway. In order to mitigate this issue, I am asking to be directed by council to erect no parking, fire lane, tollway zone signs on Monroe Street that would be on both sides of the street from the north Mount Angel Fire District property line to the south, to the south uh Mount Angel Fire District property line. And I've included a map with the staff report. Once these signs are erected, uh the curbs in the no parking zone would also be painted red and stenciled with white fire lane uh acknowledgement. This should allow for unobstructed emergency response. Will also allow the police department to take immediate action. As this fault, this request falls into the Mount Angel City Code, Article Four Parking Regulations, uh Section seventy point five five subsection K, which also authorizes impoundment, uh which will be authorized under Mount Angel City Code, Article Four Parking Regulations, seventy dot six two removal of dangerously parked vehicles. Staff recommends to council to order uh no parking signs to be erected near the Mount Angel Fire District station on Monroe Street.
Thank you. You finished?
Yes, sir.
I expected you to go on.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any questions, Councilman, staff?
It's fine to think.
Let's go paint it right now.
That's why they're on the line right now. They're just waiting to go dig the holes for the posts.
You guys. Anyway, uh, okay, I'm going to uh entertain a motion.
I move to direct the city manager to erect a no parking, fire lane, tollway zone signs on Monroe Street. On both sides of the street from the north Mount Angel Fire District property line, south to the Mount Angel Fire District property line.
Second.
The motion of Counselor Storger, second by Counselor Fowl to work the city manager to correct no parking, fire lane, fire lane, always on signs on Monroe Street. Roll call please.
Counselor Eater.
Aye.
Counselor Astor.
Aye.
Counselor Donahue.
Aye.
Counselor Ott.
Aye.
Counselor Over. Counselor Bow.
Aye.
Counselor Hill. Mayor Wall.
Okay, thank you all. Now we're down to reports and the first report is city manager report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in regards to the first item that I would like to talk to, uh, the grinded overlay pavement project near the fountain at the railroad crossing, as I'm sure you're all aware, has been completed. Um, it turned out really, really well. Uh, I was there for the entire grinding and paving portion of the project. Um, it was amazing work and I actually think we have a very high quality product. The paving company that came out and put the pavement down, um, applied even a thicker amount of blacktop than I think we requested and uh did really a job of compacting and, and smoothing it over. The railroad did come out to do the railroad track uh areas that the trains need to, need to be able to go through. Um, I'm very proud of how it turned out and I just want to say to everybody, thank you very much for the roles you all played in helping us get this project done. Um, my wife uh has been hearing about this at her dentist office in South Salem, so. I know it means a lot to a lot of people, so. Thank you to everybody. Thanks to Counselor Fowl for uh helping us, you know, figure this project out and uh getting it done for the community. This is something that's been languishing for how long?
Seventeen and a half plus years. Seventeen and a half plus.
What have you been doing all that time?
Not enough, I guess.
Anyway, thank you. Thank you. Um, as, as I mentioned earlier, um, we are now fully staffed in the police department. And um as far as staffing goes, we will likely be opening a position in public works, uh probably by the end of this week, I hope, uh if not, next week. Cool. Um, Augustine Barastro uh has been taken into custody for the January first twenty four, uh January first twenty twenty four homicide, which occurred on North Purging Street. Uh, he was apprehended by Mexican authorities initially and was transferred to U S Marshal Service, who brought him back to the United States. Marion County Sheriff's Office took custody of him around eight P M this past Friday, Friday night. And he is currently housed at the Marion County Jail, where he will be held until his trial for the homicide uh is over. Oh, I am very happy to report that um that suspect has been taken into custody. And thanks to the Sheriff's Office, but especially thanks to the U S Marshal Service and even the Mexican authorities, because nobody was injured as a result of his capture. Um, I'll just say coordination is going well. Um, you know, it's, it's never, uh, we, well, I'll just say we are in uncharted territory. Um, and we're doing the best we can. Uh, we do have um residual detected uh in our water system throughout our entire water system. It's just kind of a matter of time now before it completely kind of ready now, uh based on the amount of stuff that we have in our pipes. So that chlorine will be eating that stuff up and with any luck, we'll have a very clean water system at some point in the future. Um, but that won't come without more work, more flushing, more assistance by the public, but then also a lot of things from public works. And then I hope that um our water plan yields some good goals for the future. I've been contacted um by uh the state of Oregon to provide mutual aid to the Republican National Committee's convention in Milwaukee, Wisconsin in July. Um, I'm working to see if we might be able to send actually one to people to submit or to supplement their police forces uh in Milwaukee uh coming up this July. Um, and it would be all reimbursed um by the city of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And then uh one other thing, and, and I didn't write this down uh before. We had a meeting um about a week ago, week and a half ago with uh folks from Marion County in regards to the community prosperity funds that the county, that the city has received over the past three years and the fact that we're needing to uh re-up our I G A with Marion County so we can receive even more. Uh, what they needed from me was some uh firm plans on how I can on spending some of that money. The cool thing was, I really didn't have an idea, a very tangible idea on how I could spend the money. And um turns out that uh I could spend the money on just about anything that improves our community, improves um how our community interacts with people from out of the community. It's, it's just about anyway. Um, so one of the things that I looked at, we've seen a lot of interest about our parks and particularly Ebner Park um and that baseball field. Um, Public Works has done a good job about going out and getting some quotes about the fencing and about a variety of different things. Well, gosh, we've got enough money to actually pretty much rebuild that um particular ball field. So one of the things that I told Marion County that we would be looking at doing is doing a rehab of that ball field, uh which includes all the fencing, it would actually replace those fence panels out there with a home run fence. We would actually erect a real home run fence with the padding, um and then rehabilitate the, the actual field itself. Um, so that's, that's like number one, what we're gonna do and we're able to roll on that just right away. So um I just want to let you know that I'll be working very closely with Alan to see how soon we can, we can get this up and running and, and get uh a bunch of those dollars spent. The cool thing is we'll, we'll continue to um see some of that, see some of that money over the next three years, twenty thousand dollars every year. Um, and so the next project that I want to do after the ball field is I want to completely rebuild our gazebo. And then we'll see where we go from there and possibly do some basketball hoops and, and some other things if we don't, if we're not able to spend that, spend money out of our uh regular parks funds. So um we've got some opportunities there to really, I think, make a difference. Um, particularly since we've seen, to get an interest from like Silverton and other places to come here and spend money, you know, they're renting the ball field, they're not only renting the ball field, but they're going to, you know, Burger Time and they're going to the deli and they're going to other places and they're spending money in our community. So, yeah, we can improve that and I've heard everything you have had to say. Um, if there's a way for us to improve that, then that's what we're gonna do.
Quick, quick side note, um in speaking with Kevin Moffett, um, one of the things that he stated is if we were able to, and again, this isn't city business, this is more just trying to get all our organizations rowing this boat in the same direction, right? Um, but there was a lot of interest from the school district in the fact that if that field was rehabbed to the point that it could host junior varsity base, level baseball games. Um, that would allow our district to attract larger districts to come in and play baseball here in town.
Interesting.
Um, so there's some additional benefits outside of just JBOs, Mays. Um, it, it would be bringing in potentially bus, buses of high school students and some parents. Hopefully hungry parents. Yes, um, well, we know the baseball players are hungry, so. Uh, yes, so as, as, as long as whatever we do accomplishes that as well, that, that's just an added benefit for the community. So I'm very excited.
Thank you. Um, and the last thing I'll just say is just a blanket statement that staff has been amazing. Um, folks, we've been crazy busy with all the different projects that have been going on. Uh, and everybody's done a fabulous job. In fact, I want you to know that we read the packet amongst us, uh probably about three or four different times to try and catch any potential, because everybody's been so busy. But I appreciate uh catching one or two. It keeps us definitely humble. Uh, but we've been very busy and, and we all stand here ready to answer any other questions that you might have. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Pretty sure I can speak for the whole council. We're pretty happy with that paving project and other things as well, but um it's the first time since I've been mayor that my phone blew up with positive. Maybe I'll change my mind. This is good.
When, 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 when turning from, you know, like uh East or West Markham and looking down and seeing all the flow line equipment and then the big grinder and just the cones and the lights everywhere is I, I like that kind of, you know, I thought it was pretty awesome to see, you know, our little town is completely destroyed momentarily right down the middle. So, I mean, we were getting stuff done.
Well, we've got, we've probably got another, at least another year before O-Doc comes in and does all of the um, you know, the A D A crossing project, so that'll be thirty four of those projects going on throughout the town, so there's more yellow lights and more orange vests and more cones coming.
Doesn't, doesn't that mean it's gonna get paid after that's all done now?
That's a great question.
Before more examples show up?
That's a great question. However, you can encourage your state legislature.
Yeah, good luck.
Let's move on. To council reports, you can start, Counselor Over.
Uh, I think anything I had, it's been answered, so.
Okay. Counselor Fowl.
Uh, I had just two little things and they're just reminders so I don't fall through the cracks. One was, uh, we talked about getting additional pedestrian signs for uh the
Crosswalk?
Cross, cross the school areas and, and I know that
Cross, cross the school areas and, and I know that I saw an email that the county was on board with us doing it, but needed to follow up with us, so I'm just wanting to make sure that that didn't fall through any cracks.
Okay.
And uh, the other ones was, is we had talked previously about uh updating our code for yard parking. And then it got wrapped into other codes and that those codes were gonna get paid with grant funds. And then I haven't heard about it lately. If there's a particular residence that's starting a small wrecking yard. So I just wanted to make sure that wasn't falling through the cracks and curious where we might be with that.
Think I might know another residence.
I'm gonna yield to Colby.
For the, for the latter of the question, right?
Yeah, not the wrecking yard, but the code part.
Right, yeah, I'm not unaware of the residential wrecking yard.
To talk, to talk about Kirk and our.
Yeah, he's in the process right now of combining those into the next uh presentation with John Code. Um, he's working, is what he's told me. I don't have an estimate right now for time, but I will get that from him. Okay. Thanks just to reinforce it.
Counselor Astorga?
Uh, I just had a quick question for you, Alan. Um, when was the last time we TV'd the storm line, that storm main going down Main Street? Like the entire length of it? When was the last time it was TV'd? I had all of it TV'd. Uh, we have TV. Oh, storm, yeah, I don't know. I'm thinking sewer. I don't know if it's ever been. Well, one of the questions I, or one of the things I was wondering is if we're gonna ever pave, would be a good time to TV both the sewer and storm lines to make sure that if we have any more repairs to do, we're gonna dig up that road, you might as well do it now before we, we pave, because it'd look really chintzy if we did a cut up of a freshly paved road, you know, so. Yeah, yeah, like can be, exactly. But I'm just, uh, I, I just was wondering if that's, I know it's coming down, like it may or may not, but it, I'd rather be more prepared than not prepared.
It's a good, it's a good point. We'll look into it and see.
So.
What we can do.
Uh, another thing is, thank you for the Ebner Park thing. I, that's kind of been near and dear to my heart.
Yeah.
That's right, I was, all about the kids and, and sports and stuff and I think it's, it'd be a great asset to have um another ball field to hold tournaments here. Not maybe, not even just for kids, but for adults too. I mean, I, I, I love a good softball game. I used to love watching the softball tournaments during Oak Fest. That was, that was great. My, my dad and I would go down and watch when we lived, when I lived over there with him on Markham. Just walk down. So I think it encourages, like you said, it encourages businesses and I, you have my full support. I just wanted to say that out loud. I think, I, I appreciate it very much. Um, and along that lines, uh Ebner Park, the ball, the new ball court there or the hoops and everything, there's, I've seen so many kids out there. It's just been a positive. I really appreciate that. There, there's, we're getting more and more kids out and I like seeing that. So I just want to say thank you, guys. It's, it's not, it's not going unnoticed, so. Yeah, thank you. Uh, and lastly, uh, I was, I was seeing that um more and more folks are taking advantage of the um uh, what do you call it? The uh sewer line repair. I have uh s- a few residents who've done some sewer repairs. And I'm wondering, how many of them have been the fault of contract being worn through? Have you had? Because they, they, they bore it, or does it?
What?
Or does a citizen pay for it and then they get reversed by the company? So, both. So um, we, I've had to pay for some because of our locates have been off. Okay. Our sewer laterals. Um, I don't believe that the customers ever had to pay for one that I'm aware of. It's either been Public Works or the contractor. Okay, I just was wondering, uh, cause there's a lot of like, I know I've mislocated lines in my career and they were off by a couple feet and then they bore through it, so. But yeah, so I just was wondering if we had, you know, an agreement with whoever it was Comcast requested, whoever it was that was doing through that, that they were if they were located properly, that they were gonna be taken care of and so.
Yeah, um.
Any damage?
Yeah, me and Mark, we're kind of talking about that, but that's a later conversation.
So, all right, well, thank you. I just, I'm going to that with my parents' house.
The, the, the way that we've dealt with that is when, when it has presented itself, we've been able to address that directly with the company at the time. Um, and so that we can get that to resolve. And Alan, I will say, has gone toe-to-toe with those folks. Um, and actually, and doing a really good job of holding them accountable so that they can, they can fix the damage that they have caused. Um, and we've examined those, each one as they become apparent. And uh, and period of. Sewer laterals are really hard, because we can tell by the old uh TV reports, we can tell where they come into the main line, but from there, we have no idea which way they turn, if they go straight to the house or.
Right. You know, you could say a forty-five, but really.
Yeah.
Could go to the other way.
Well, there are, there are some that come out to the house and then come out to like the sidewalk area and then take a left or take a right and then kind of go in a diagonal or, or may go straight, but it's kind of hard to say, like Alan said, from the TV reports. Yeah, where they go from where they actually come into the sewer.
That's all I have, and I appreciate that. Um, just a little tidbit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Domming.
Okay.
Counselor Off?
So after we had our conversation about our lovely ad last month, I was greatly disappointed when I picked up an ad and I was like, this has to be an old one. It can't be the new one and it was very sad. So thank you, Jackie, for giving us all these new travel salons, because that ad is really fabulous on page twenty-seven. It is a nice looking ad. Thank you for doing that. I'm waiting to see it. Yeah, it is a very nice.
Very blue.
Very. Very blue.
Very.
Very blue.
Dark hour, yeah.
It is, it's very.
It just so happens to be on the other side of a page that teach friendly places, but. You know? And then right on the next page is beer, wine and cider, so. They put a sin, a spot.
Between the dog room and.
That's all.
Counselor President?
I, I got a little laundry list, but I'll make it quick. Um, was the water usage only for May?
What are you talking about?
Compared to last year's May?
So, well, I'll look at what I said, which was the, the only uh, you won't pay more than you once paid last year, and I said through September. So.
So it is through September?
Yeah, because I want to, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that we have a really good flush on our system through September. And we are going to, you know, as we want, going to the summer months, people are gonna start turning on their sprinklers and, and doing all that kind of stuff, but I really want our system flushed out. I want to get as much of that junk out of the system as possible.
Cause I've heard of both, I've heard it both ways. I've heard just only May, but I've heard also till September, so it is through September.
September is what I've said. So I encourage, I, I still want to encourage everybody to flush, just like we're asking, because um, I've been struggling to hold a residual. It'll show up and then it, it goes away and then it shows back up and goes away.
Okay.
Um, so.
At the reservoir or throughout the system?
Uh, well, since the reservoir's had a residual in it, um, both times I went up there, it's, it's been present, but it's just in the distribution.
Distribution. I'm assuming at the barn in town.
Correct. Even Public Works, so this morning I went in to test it and it was gone. And then I let it run for all day and then by the end of the day, I had residual like a point oh one or point oh two.
Are you using, are you using calorometers or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that.
So the last thing I got is, um, I've got kind of a code enforcement list, so I just come to City Hall. Do you want to hear it now?
Come to City Hall.
Okay. It, it's quite lengthy. So, City Hall.
You can, you can email me.
Okay. That's all I have.
And my cops will be happy.
Nope.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have student council report.
Mr. Mayor, um, I just have a couple of notes on the bond committee meeting from May sixteen. Um, they focused on the role of the committee and what they're gonna be working on moving forward. I'm sure that Counselor Powell can give you a little more details if he feels so compelled. Um, Superintendent Stuckey gave a presentation where she covered the expectations for the committee uh focusing on controls and budget complex. Uh, she discussed two delivery methods, which were design bid and build and progressive design build. Um, I don't understand them fully, but um, that was what she presented on. She emphasized the committee's main roles, which were review spending, progress and documents. Um, as far as I heard, she didn't get too far into specific bond projects, um, but that's kind of what the rules that they laid out were gonna be focusing on doing in the future meetings. Um, they nominated Tommy Redman for a leadership position. Uh, the GMP is due June, June, with construction starting June nineteenth. So proposed meeting dates coming up are June twentieth and July seventeenth. Um, other things going on in the district, everything's kind of wrapping up now, because there'll be most of the students will be finishing up in two weeks, aside from my class, um graduations this Friday. And yeah. Thank you so much for having me, guys. This is my last meeting, so I really appreciate it. It's been a really cool experience for me. Um, especially since I'll be studying political science, this has been really enlightening for my future endeavors, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to mayor's report. And I'm gonna start out with um our student counselor, Sailor Hill. Tomorrow will receive the Junior First Citizen Award from the Chamber of Commerce. And that is. And that uh I happen to be on that committee, of course. Uh, but um, anyway, uh that comes with a two thousand dollar unrestricted scholarship, so. She did pretty, it's a good night for you. But we thank you for everything you do. Second item, we're gonna be quick too. Uh, we had a great Memorial Day um event at the cemetery on Memorial Day. And um the American Legion post does a lot of work. If you saw them and thought it was good, the worst part was the mayor's speech, because his printer didn't work, but um I had to read it off my phone. Anyway, but um, but it was a really good get together and, and they do a, a, a great job in putting it all together. And if you missed a fly-in, fly-over, there's only two planes, but they were loud. So, and then um again, the mayor has not been doing his work. I haven't got the city manager evaluation out, but it's coming soon, so anyway. Other than that, I have nothing else. So. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned. Sure, we're better than EV, aren't we?